We will call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, October 16th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call.
Mr. Barber.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here. I would ask that you would observe a moment of silence with us this evening and please remember those folks that have been, fell victim to Hurricane Michael and have a special request tonight. The Grekis family, a young man injured in an auto accident is fighting for his life right now. So, please remember those. Paul Grekis and that family, his son's name is George Grekis. We all know what a terrible time it is when your child is laying injured like that. So, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as we observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Farmer.
I'd like to make a motion to add the following items to tonight's business meeting agenda. Item one, Consent Agenda Declaration of Local Emergency is item 7F. New Business Dale Lease Purchase Agreement for Server Infrastructure is item 12B. New Business Project Homeland Performance Agreement is item 12C. And also, new business landfill Hurricane Michael related tip and fee waiver is item 12D.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
I wanted to add something to you.
Yes, sir.
Under appointments, I'd like to add Danville Pennsylvania Community Service Board and Department of Social Services and Thor's Ministry.
And I'll add that to my motion as well.
So, you're amending your motion to include those items?
To conclude Mr. Barber's request.
I second.
So, it's under item 13. Is that correct with form appointments?
Appointments number 13, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. Please record the votes as all votes have been cast. Motion carries unanimously, 7:00 and 7:00. Now can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Is she here?
Ms. Caveness should be here.
Ms. Caveness, are you here?
I am.
Oh, all right. We have a proclamation for Ms. Caveness and we'll all go down and present it, please. Awareness Month, October 2018. Whereas, excuse me. Whereas one in every four women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime and approximately 15.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year. And whereas the average of three women in the United States lose their lives every day and domestic violence is the leading cause of injury to women. And whereas children exposed to violence can experience serious long-term consequences creating difficulties in school, post-traumatic disorders, alcohol and drug abuse, and criminal behavior. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas it is our obligation as citizens, leaders, and governmental officials to take a strong and united stance against violence. And whereas victims of the violence should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need. And domestic abuses should be punished to the fullest extent on the law. And whereas we encourage domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from appropriate Victims Services organizations and the National Domestic Violence Hotline, And whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. And whereas as a community, we must dedicate ourselves to protecting vulnerable members of our society, we have a moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence and to address its brutal and destructive effects. Therefore, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs and Victims Services providers, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges all citizens to work towards the elimination of domestic violence. Given under my hand this 16th day of October, 2018, Robert W. Bob Warren, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors.
I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors and Chairman Warren for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. My name is Lisa Caveness and I'm the Executive Director of Haven of the Dan River Region. We are a very young agency, two and a half years old. That's total mission is to support, provide support services for victims of domestic and sexual assault as well as help educate and create and increase in awareness in Danville and Pennsylvania County. I also want to thank Kaylin for her assistance to helping me modify the proclamation into the standard format that's presented to me tonight. It is through the education and support of the leaders in our area that establishes the protocol for our community, for our citizens. So, I sincerely appreciate your dedication and your support to this cause. Domestic Violence Awareness Month consists of a number of different programs. Specifically, this is our second year and I'm hoping to leave some of the posters and flyers so you can disseminate that through your community, your area businesses. We collaborate with Avret University to provide a Take Back the Night event which starts at the courthouse in Danville with a small ceremony, a march to Avret University, and it concludes with a celebration with their students and Dr. Franks at the university. In addition, we have Danville Toyota is, has, donate, is donating proceeds from each sale of an auto this month as a type of fundraiser for us. Twenty percent of our expenses has to come from the local community. Eighty percent comes from federal and state grants, Virginia Department of Social Services and Department of Justice. In order to continue receiving the eighty percent, we have to receive twenty percent from individuals in our community. So, in addition to Danville Toyota that's contributing a portion of their purchase every month, we have two nonprofit agencies. One is I Am Sarah that is providing a 5K walk at the end of the month. And then, there's also going to be a zombie walk. So, kids love the zombie walk. They absolutely get very excited about it. The purpose is to have fun and to increase awareness. As I said, we're, our agency's two and a half years old, okay? I dare say that most of you sitting here this, before me this evening is not aware of our services. So, I hope to be able to leave this and some of my business cards. I also invite each of you to take a tour of the facility. It's donated space from Southern Virginia Hospital formerly known as Danville Regional Medical Center. They've been gracious enough and God spit crew came in and remodeled the space for us into our current emergency shelter and space for staff. Thank you for permitting me to be here tonight and for your support.
Ms. Caveness, thank you very much and thank you for the great work you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We're down to 8A, 2018 VACO Achievement Award Presentation. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Warren, members of the board, Mr. County Administrator, Mr. County Attorney. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Katie Boyle. I'm the Director of Government Affairs with the Virginia Association of Counties and it is my distinct privilege tonight to present you with a VACO Achievement Award for your outstanding parks project. Pennsylvania County was the overall winner this year, so it is really a special honor for me to be here tonight. By way of background, for the benefit of your constituents who may not be familiar with VACO, we've existed since 1934 and our mission is to serve and support your efforts as county officials through our advocacy efforts, our educational programs, and our member services. In 2003, we established the Achievement Award Program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services. So, this is our 16th Annual Achievement Awards, the third win for Pennsylvania County. We received a record 106 entries this year and we selected only 27 winning projects from 19 counties. So, you can see what a truly competitive and selective program this is. The award winners were chosen by a distinguished panel of experts and I just want to thank them publicly for sharing their time and their expertise with us. Our volunteer judges were Ted Povar, who's the Associate Director of the Virginia Institute of Government, Dr. Cheryl Bailey, who's the former Deputy County Administrator with Chesterfield County, and my former colleague Larry Land, who's retired as VACO's Director of Policy Development. There were a number of criteria that our judges looked at in following, in selecting programs for winning, including whether the program offered an innovative approach to a situation or a problem, whether it promoted intergovernmental cooperation or partnerships, and whether it could provide a model for other jurisdictions to learn from. And I know the judges were very impressed by the really creative way that you all leveraged county seed money to build some really wonderful health and recreational opportunities for your residents. Community health was our presidential initiative this year and it was really exciting to see the way that you're looking at community health in a very holistic way. Mr. Moore was nice enough to give me a tour of Cavalier Park this afternoon and so I got a chance to see what a wonderful community asset you have there. So, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, I'll turn it over to Mr. Moore to talk a little bit about the project. At the appropriate time, I have a plaque for you all for tonight and then we'll also be recognizing your achievement at the annual conference. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Moore.
For those of you, those of you who know me, you know that my job is a labor of love in my hometown and to be recognized on a state level for the park project is, in a little bit shy of eight years in existence of the Parks and Recreation Department, for those of you who've been, been around or aware of, of what it took to get a Parks and Recreation Department and how far we've come in this time, it's, it's, it's special to me, but I know it's special to county government, county administration, the school board. So, I've asked those to be in attendance tonight. We have several of those in the crowd. Also, asked our funders for the park project as well. If you include the school system who, who we put the parks on their land, we have 10 funding partners for the project, both private and public. And so, it's really been a holistic approach to Parks and Recreation. I'm honored that, to have the support of the Board of Supervisors, to have the support of the school board, the community, you know, in doing the, giving the tour to Katie a little while ago, you know, the park fills up quickly, specifically at that one with youth cheerleaders, youth football players that are participating, their siblings quickly run to the playgrounds and the parents are walking on the track and riding bikes. And so, it's really been a vision that I had when we first, when I first started here in 2011 to have parks at the middle schools and to see that play out and to culminate here with a wonderful award recognizing Pennsylvania County for their innovative approach to Parks and Recreation. I sincerely appreciate your support and the support of the community. It's been a career opportunity to come here and, and build a Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We're so proud of all that good work and it's amazing to see what goes on at those parks. And gentlemen, Ms. Bowles has asked to get her picture taken with us, so if we will, we'll go down so she can do that and make a presentation. And Mr. Moore, if you'd like to bring anybody forward that helps your project. Y'all did a nice job. Keep it straight and get that done. Thank y'all. Mr. Price.
I'm Justin Price. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the Recreation Program Coordinator here for Pennsylvania County. I started about three months ago. Very excited to be here and be a part of this, this county. I also serve as Chairman Advisory for the Youth Commission here in Pennsylvania County. As Chairman of the Advisory for the Youth Commission, I'd like to state our mission and introduce our 2018-19 Youth Commission. The primary mission of Pennsylvania County Youth Commission is an act of a voice for Pennsylvania County youth and serving as a link between students, our elected governing officials, Board of Supervisors, and school board. Our Youth Commission also sponsors various service projects throughout the year and helps organize and publicize countywide high school, school social events to help build a sense of community among students living here in Pennsylvania County. I'm now going to introduce our six Youth Commission appointees. First, we have Kendall Moore. She's a sophomore at Tunstall High School. Next, we have Conitria Terrain. She is in 11th grade in Chatham. Next, we have Savannah Reed. She's a sophomore at Tunstall High School. Next, we have Miranda Cochran. She's a sophomore at Tunstall High School. Next, Blake Sanchez. He is a senior at Gretna High School. And last but not least, Joshua Neal and he's a sophomore at Tunstall High School. These ladies and gentlemen have stepped up to be the voice of our youth here in our Youth Commission. I've tried to stress to them this year, we're going to do a lot of service projects and things and that's great, but I want them to understand that they are our voice of our youth to their peers at each of their schools and that's important. And I'm trying to really transition to that so they can have that voice and express concerns or, you know, positive things that they're seeing from the county and just be involved as much as they can. Again, this is our 2018-19 Pennsylvania Youth Commission.
If you want to stand with them, we'll get a picture. Mark, will you get one of all of them with Justin with them?
Thank you, young folks. That's our future leaders. Thank you, Mr. Price. We're down to item nine, Hearing of Citizens. Each person addressing the Board on the Hearing of Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the Chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the Board more than once during Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the Board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the Citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next Board meeting. Absent Chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. The first person signed up is Phyllis Roach.
Good evening, Chairman Warman, Warren, sorry, Mr. Smitherman and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Phyllis Roach. I'm a resident of the Stanton River District and also the Director of the Pennsylvania County Literacy Program. And I'm here to give you a short update on our work and program outreach and to ask you for some help. Our literacy program was founded in 1990 by Chatham's own Frances Hallam Hurt with a mission of providing free adult literacy services to anyone over the age of 18. Our literacy program has grown since that time and currently serves county citizens ages 18 to 60. Our definition of literacy is very broad in scope and our students define their own literacy goals. And whatever they may be, we are there beside them working together. Many here may take it for granted being a literate adult, but imagine that for whatever reason you didn't get the education you need to read and write well. The world would be a very scary, confusing place. These are the adults that we seek out to help and we work with them every day through our volunteer tutors. Our students are functioning, productive, and contributing members of this county and they need our help. What we're asking for your help with tonight is a space to work. But before I get to that, I first want to say that we really appreciate the county's annual financial contribution to our program that we have enjoyed since Ms. Hurt founded the program. But currently, our biggest challenge is locating a place to do this good work. This year, we were asked to move out of the county building at 18 Depot Street. There are many conversations amongst various county groups and personnel about where to place our program and we were offered space in the Planetarium Building. I want to thank Dr. Mark Jones and Robin Haymore from the schools as they worked extensively with us, but we were unable to take their offer due to scheduling conflicts with their library and some issues with mildew in the basement office that was the second choice. We store hundreds of children's books and GED materials and in addition tutor out of the space. We're very concerned that the materials would not do well in the space offered and would be very expensive to replace. So, our needs as a group are minimal. We really just need an area for a computer desk, a dry storage closet, and perhaps a small tutoring space. We are not asking for any luxury or excess, but we do need a place to continue doing what we do. So, surely, we're hoping someone in the county has a space for our program and we need your help and we could use it as soon as possible as we are supposed to be out of the office already. Thank, am I done? Was that it? Is that three minutes? Okay. Help. I'll just say help and I'll submit two letters to Mr. Smitherman. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Next up is Carol Cooper.
My name is Carol Cooper. I live in the Callens-Gretna District and you're probably accustomed to hearing from me about the library, but I am no longer with it. I'm very grateful to you all for all the support and help you gave us when I was on the Board and on the foundation. But I'm here tonight to talk about what I consider an unpleasant subject and that is dogs. I have three dogs that are shelter dogs. They are fenced in. I take good care of my dogs. I have living near me, a family that has, they claim they're not pit bulls, some kind of bulls, that run loose. They come into my yard. They started this about three years ago when somebody was working and left my back gate open and one of my dogs got out and attempted to attack that dog. We did, we did get the dog back. I have tried to talk- We did, we did get the dog back. I have tried to talk to the owner of these animals, who will not come out of the house and will not talk to me. The dog warden has been there four times that I know of to try to talk to these people because the dogs run loose on other people's property. They did attack someone else's dog in the middle of Museville Road and did serious damage to that animal, which is, I guess, still under medical treatment. And I, I am here to ask you people if there's anything you can do to help those of us who, who are animal lovers, who have our dogs, who take care of our dogs. I walk my dogs on my own property. I do not go on anybody else's property. And I feel I should be safe on my own property and not have to worry that some animal that is not being taken care of is, is there. The dog warden has been to this place four times and has attempted to talk with these people, and I can't quote what her, you know, what her engagement with them was, but I know that she has tried. These animals come onto my property at six o'clock in the morning, at midnight, at all hours, and they are attempting to dig under my seven-foot fence. I live in mortal fear that they will get under there because I, I can't be up at twenty-four hours a day to protect my dogs. And I am here to ask if there's anything the county can do in enforcing some kind of control or, I don't know what you call it, but to protect those of us who have dogs, who take care of our dogs, who keep them on our own property, and we still do not feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gooden. Next up is Katie Whitehead.
Katie Whitehead, Chatham Blairs. My family's land is a tree farm between Twenty-Nine South and Chatham High School. We have a small lake, my favorite place on earth. The Williams Transco right-of-way crosses our spillway. Our lake is now threatened by consequences of the existing pipelines on our land. We would like to see this problem remedied, but we are also not happy about the possibility of being forced to take additional threats to our dam from the Mountain Valley Pipeline Extension. A spring-fed creek flows into our lake and carries runoff from Chatham High School. Runoff has increased dramatically in recent years since the county constructed new athletic fields, and we've had more intense and persistent rainfall. Over the years, the spillway has filled in and narrowed. Whereas water rising in the lake should enter the spillway when it gets six inches above the level of the drainpipe, the water now has to get twenty inches above the drain. In 2007, during construction of the fourth Williams line, we asked Williams to restore the spillway. The project head told us their policy is to return the land to existing contours and made clear that we could not restore the spillway ourselves. We met similar resistance this spring when the pond drain was partially blocked. On September twenty-second and October eleventh, the lake level rose five to six feet to within inches of the top of the dam. Water filled the spillway overflowing in some places. We now have Williams' attention. However, it's uncertain at this point whether Williams will provide an effective remedy. I lose sleep imagining real possibilities. I invite you to come and see our treeless fourteen-acre right-of-way with four pipelines and room for two more. Please don't assume that pipeline landowners are happy. We continue to sacrifice for the sake of natural gas distribution, and we don't see evidence of public need that would justify letting another pipeline company, Mountain Valley, far less reputable, control even more of our land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead.
This, this is copies of recent op-ed, and my comments tonight are on the bottom.
Thank you. Next up is Robert Pollak.
Appreciate being able to speak with you tonight, members of the Board. My name is Robert Pollak. I'm from the Tunstall District. I own and operate Hillview Farms Incorporated, located near Tunstall High School. Almost three decades ago, my father and mother purchased the farm in which I built my home in nineteen ninety-nine. That farm was purchased with an understanding that there was an amendment that a hundred and fifty feet was all that the Williams Pipeline Company needed to take care of business that they needed to do with their pipelines on the existing three lines that crossed that property. The farm was in disrepair and had been idle for a number of years. And once we began farming the property, it was evident that our challenges for repairing the soil on the pipeline, where the pipeline passed, were going to be a challenge. There was disrupted soil structure. Topsoil had been commingled with the subsol. Nutrient deficiencies abounded, and the terrain was uneven. With the best no-till farming practices and about a decade of work, we were able to make the land slowly return to its natural state of productivity. That took over ten years. During that time, we have experienced two repairs of the existing gas lines on our property, and the results were disappointing. One such project ended up having a silt barrier burst, and it fed into the spring, which fed my pond. Later on, three years ago, we had a pipeline project for repair. They commingled the soil, put it back into the, over the pipes, and to this day, I'd be glad for you to visit the property and see that that land is not productive in that area where that repair was made. My father and I embarked on building a new processing facility so that we could be able to produce my income, sole income, and return to the farm on a full-time basis several years ago. And we felt like we were a success after two years of project work. We had challenges farming, and we know that comes with the weather. Public outcries from things like terrorists and things of that nature affect our living. But we make our sole living from this land. I have two full-time employees that are local residents as well. And it's a concern when a pipeline proposal such as this, with three lines already crossing the property, a fourth being proposed by Williams, and another by Southgate, when Alamance County found there was no need, which is the destination for this, their, the Mountain Valley Pipeline Extension, they voted unanimously that they did not need this pipeline to supply their residents. And there are no taps in Pennsylvania County proposed in this project. So how can this be a benefit to the landowners and residents of Pennsylvania County? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. That completes everyone that signed up for our Hearing of the Citizens. We'll move to public hearing. Rezoning, public hearings pursuant to Article Five, Division Six of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance. The Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accordance with this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. We will open case number one at seven forty P.M. Mr. Sides.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Case R-18-020. Cheryl Worthy-Green and Malcolm Green have petitioned to rezone a total of seven point three eight acres, consisting of two parcels located on State Road Nine Thirty-Six, Miller Drive, in the Dan River Election District, from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District for organic farming. Once the properties are rezoned to A-1, then all use is listed under Section Thirty-Five-Dash-One Seventy-Eight are permitted use. The Planning Commission, with no opposition, recommended granting the petitioner's request by unanimous eight-zero vote with a written proffer to be attached. The proffer's been provided to you all tonight prior to opening the public hearing. The staff summary is enclosed in the Board packet, and I'll call your attention to the proffer that's been offered to restrict uses, saying that this rezoning only for the sole purpose of environmentally friendly organic farming, no livestock. Number two, the restriction will run with the land. And number three, in the event further land is cleared for this purpose, the current natural privacy of adjacent properties will be retained with the exception of a written agreement between property owners that's signed by Malcolm Green. Mr. Chairman, Mr. and Mrs. Green are here to represent the petition tonight.
Mr. and Ms. Green, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Chairman. We'd just like to thank you for your attention to this matter. We wanted to also thank the Pennsylvania Planning Commission, particularly Karen Hayes and Kathy Benton for all their help, as well as Pennsylvania Council for drafting the proffer of conditions. And we would greatly appreciate your acceptance and our request.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Green. Please stay close by in case the Board has any questions. There was no one that signed up for the public hearing, so I closed the public hearing at seven forty-three. And entertaining the Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, after considering these two properties and what they're doing, as well as the homework they've done by dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's, and I want to compliment you on that very thorough. In the case of R-18-020, the Residential Suburban Subdivision District, I want to turn that into A-1 Agricultural District. So I make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barber. Is there any discussion on the motion?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just as a technicality, because I want to support this also, but any application itself under item eight, Mr. Sides, it says our conditions being proffered, and that's check no. Is that a problem?
No, sir. They furnished a written proffer tonight before the public hearing.
Okay, we're good. I want to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. and Ms. Green, your property's been rezoned. Thank you. We're down to case number two. We will open the public hearing at seven forty-four. Mr. Sides.
Mr. Chairman, case R-18-021. Ricky and Debbie Carter have petitioned to rezone a total of two point five nine acres, three parcels of land located on U.S. Highway Twenty-Nine North in the Banister Election District, from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B-2 Business District General for sale, service, and repair of vehicles, specifically a used car lot. Once the properties are rezoned to B-2, all use is listed under Section Thirty-Five-Dash-Three Six Five are permitted. The Planning Commission, with opposition, recommended granting the petitioner's request by unanimous eight-zero vote. Staff summaries enclosed in the Board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ricky Carter, and Mr. Roger Isom are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Carter, Mr. Isom, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Good afternoon, and I'd just like to thank y'all for y'all's support and for, for your vote, and I appreciate everything that y'all are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. No one signed up for this item, so I closed the public hearing at seven forty-five. Board's pleasure. Mr. Chairman. In case R-18-021, I'd like to recommend a passage of the request to rezone to B-2. Do I have a second? Second. Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. It carries unanimously. Mr. Carter, your property's been rezoned. Thank you. All right, we're down to case number three, and we'll open the public hearing at seven forty-six. Mr. Sides.
Yes, case R-18-022. Smith Mountain Dock and Lodge LLC has petitioned to rezone a total of eight point eight two acres, three parcels of land located on State Road Six Twenty-Six, Smith Mountain Road in the Callens-Gretna Election District, from A-1 Agricultural District to RPD, Residential Plan Unit Development District. This rezoning returns the properties back to its original zoning designation, as proffered in, in prior cases when it was rezoned in 2014. Once the properties are rezoned to RPD, all use is listed under Section Thirty-Five-Dash-Two Nine Five are permitted use. The Planning Commission, with no opposition, recommended granting the petitioner's request by eight-zero unanimous vote. Staff summary is enclosed in the Board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Thomas Brooks is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Brooks, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
Good evening, members of the Board. My name's Thomas Brooks. I'm a land surveyor with Acres of Virginia Incorporated, and our company is representing this project. And if you have any questions of me tonight, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. We may come back to you. The Board may have some questions. If you have any now, or you want to hear from the citizens first, okay. Just hang close, and we'll be right back. We did have one individual sign up. Harold Arthur.
Good evening. My name's Harold Arthur, and I live at 509 Lake Point Drive, approximately a half mile from where this project is supposed to take place. And I'm here for informational purposes, and I'd like to hear what's going to go on this parcel of land in terms of units. Is it going to be apartments? What is it going to be? So we can better have a, a better understanding of what's going to go there, and that's my primary reason for being here, sir.
Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Brooks?
I can answer the questions if y'all want the questions answered.
I'm sure if you don't answer them now, the Board's going to want you to answer them.
So Mr. Arthur and I spoke last time at the Planning Commission, and I had stated to him and the Planning Commission what our plan is. The plan is to take this piece of property to build residential homes on it, and these residential homes will be for sale. The property, however, will stay inside of a homeowners association, and the only thing that they will own is the unit themselves. I don't know if you're familiar with some of the projects in Myrtle Beach. You'll go down there and you'll buy units. You don't own the land. Somebody else takes care of the land for you and all the amenities, and that is what's being proposed here. These are going to be single-family type dwellings, typically, typical be two-bed room in size. And as I discussed with Mr. Arthur previously, I'd even discussed with my client the types of homes that he would put on there. Mr. Arthur had inquired about patio homes, and I had told him that my client is open to proposing and putting patio homes on there for elderly in case someone wanted to use it for those purposes. So that's pretty much what we'd like to do in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. We may have some more questions. But that's all the folks that signed up, so it's the Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Farmer.
I'd like to make a motion for case R-18-022, that eight point eight two acres become rezoned from currently A-1 Agricultural to RPD, Residential Plan Unit Development.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
If I recall, I think we, when we rezoned this property a few years back, it was part of the rezoning that if they did not use it for agricultural use in a certain amount of time, that it would revert back to the original designation. Is that correct? I remember this coming before the Board. Can't remember people's names, but I can remember- Can't remember people's names, but I can remember things like this. And I think that it was proffered then that this would revert back to the original zoning designation. Is this the original zoning designation?
Yes, it is. Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. Vote carries unanimously.
This is fine. I just need to speak before the next one.
Mr. Brooks, property's been rezoned. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you open this next case, there's been amendment to the proffer, and for legal reasons, it's important to get this on the record prior to opening the public hearing. So Mr. Sides, can you explain what's going on? And then you need to open the public hearing, please.
Yes, there, Mr. Chairman, there's a proffer that's offered in your board packet associated with the case 023, and it says that the uses would only be for the solar facility. When it references buffers and setbacks, it says there shall be a 400-foot minimum setback from the solar arrays to the property lines of adjoining owners. And the developer or property owners brought it to our attention that their intention was that the 400 feet be along the residential section of the road to the west side. So they proposed to amend that, saying there'll be a 400-foot minimum buffer on the west side of the project from the solar arrays to the property lines of adjoining owners. So I think the developer just wanted to clarify that they didn't intend for the 400-foot setback to be on the portions of the property that's currently undeveloped and wooded, but would be from the residences along Ringgold Road. And I'm sure they can explain during their presentation. But like Mr. Hunt says, this needs to be clarified prior to opening the public hearing.
And this proffer's in your packet on page 111. They're changing to A, is that correct, Greg?
That's correct.
That's all. We just need to get that on the record prior to opening the public hearing for legal reasons.
I will open the public hearing at 7:53. Mr. Sides.
Yes, in case R-18-023, Danville Farm LLC has petitioned to rezone a total of 185.35 acres, three parcels of land located on State Road 734, Ringgold Road, and on State Road 655, Tom Fork Road in the Dan River Election District from B1 Business District Limited and R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for a solar energy facility. Once the properties are rezoned to A1, then all uses will be listed under section 35-178 or permitted with the exception of the limitations of the proffer. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by unanimous 8-0 vote. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tom Terrell, and Mr. Louis Ione are here to represent the petition.
Yes, sir. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Mr. Chairman, Warren, I'm Tom Terrell. I'm legal counsel for Strata Solar. I would like to just recognize that the planning board did recommend this project unanimously, and nobody has signed up for it. Regarding that very minor amendment, all it does is to conform the written word with the site plan that we have consistently shown to neighbors, to staff, and to the public for many, many months. We have been upfront with what we're doing. It's just that the written word needed to be tweaked a bit for that. Except for that part where there's the residential area, this is an extremely well-buffered site on all of the north, south, and east sides. We do have a complete team of experts here. I don't know that you're going to have any questions, but we have a team of experts to make sure that your questions don't go unanswered.
Board, Louis Ione with Strata Solar, I'm the developer on this project. We did hold a community meeting and I think had broad support for the project, so be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to clarify that there's a lot of information in your board packet, but tonight's hearing is about rezoning the property. Once the property is rezoned, then a special use permit will be required for the actual solar facility. They will have to address landscaping, post-decommissioning bonds. All of that will be handled under special use. So I just wanted to be clear that if you approve the case tonight, you're not approving the site plan, you're just approving the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. No one signed up to speak to this matter this evening, so I will close the public hearing at 7:57 and entertain the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of R-18-023, I make the motion in the Dan River Election District that we move to take B1 Business District Limited and R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion or questions?
Yes, sir. Let me give some discussion here. Solar farms are coming to Pennsylvania County. I wasn't expecting it to be the second one coming to my district, but nevertheless, that's what happened. Danville is going to need some power, because I do believe that we've got other announcements that will be prevalent in the future that I'm not at liberty to give information on. Secondly, I have attended another meeting in the city of Danville, one to two years ago approximately, when the then-Governor Dr., I mean Doctor, Mr. McAuliffe was the governor, previous governor, who talked with me somewhat extensively after the meeting was over, who told me, because I asked him how much is going to be mandated in Virginia, and he got a little upset about that, because I don't think he liked that word mandate on public TV, in public TV. But anyway, I didn't know that I said the wrong thing. But he did tell me that afterwards, he said, "We're not requiring you to put solar farms up in your area." He said, "But if you don't, you're going to lose jobs." And I said, "How are we going to lose jobs?" We have the largest naval base in the world in Norfolk, Virginia, and how this ties in, I would solicit you and recommend you calling the former Governor McAuliffe and let him entertain this question. But he said that Norfolk Naval Base, that Mr. Blackstock and myself have had an opportunity to serve with, if we didn't adopt solar projects in the state of Virginia, that the Norfolk Naval Base was considering moving its facility to South Carolina. Now, you can understand then the economic effect that would have in our state. So I don't know all the dots, can't connect them all, but I know this. When he said it, I'm trusting the governor, so solar farms are coming. How much? I don't know yet, but solar farms are coming. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll just make one comment. Typically, it would give me a lot of concern to vote for a proffer that's being amended tonight that didn't go before the board and Planning Commission and didn't go in the public when you were making the presentation. But apparently, the presentation that was made publicly had the correct information, and we just had verbiage wrong. So that makes me feel a lot more comfortable. So thank you all for clearing that question up in advance. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Property's been rezoned. Thank you. We're down to 10B. Other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district, and/or his or her place of residency for non-county residents, non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time. Unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given, to extend the speaker's allotted time absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. We will open the public hearing at 8 o'clock. And Mr. Richard Hicks.
Thank you. As you know, we've had some local businesses express an interest in sponsoring some landscaping around our Welcome to Pennsylvania County signs. All of those are within VDOT right away. We met with them, and they indicated their first, our first step would be for the county to adopt a comprehensive roadside management plan, which lists all the rules and regulations for sponsoring these signs. It gives all the VDOT regulations, even down to the color of the signs and everything. You have that detailed document in your agenda packet. We also left on your table, we've got four sketches here. We decided to go the very cheap route on getting these drawn. We didn't want, you know, to want, you know, to spend a lot of money on getting plans done. This is fine with VDOT. The first drawing there is if you take 58 West at the Westover Drive, that is our landscape plan for that site. If you turn over to the next page, if you're leaving Danville on 29 North, just as you leave Danville at exit 265, there's a sign there, this landscape plan for that sign. The third one is the sign at the Campbell County line if you're coming down 29 South. And the final sign is on Route 40 West as you're leaving Henry County, coming into Pennsylvania County. And we currently have checks in hand for all four of those signs to be sponsored for the next five years. And based on VDOT regulations, we had to have a public hearing on our plan, and if the board approves the plan this evening, we'd also ask that you authorize us to submit a land use permit application to VDOT for these signs, and once that's approved, we can start landscaping.
Okay.
I'm an expert team of one, if you've got any questions.
No one signed up for the public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing at 8:03 and entertain the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some questions. Do we need to get a motion?
Yeah, let's get it on the floor, and then we'll...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Pennsylvania County Comprehensive Roadside Management Plan as presented and authorized county staff to submit a land user, land user permit application to VDOT for the 12 Welcome to Pennsylvania County signs.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Scares. Now we'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Barber.
Yes, sir. Let me take the sponsors. Will they have a sign kind of similar to Danville from the sponsor company? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, each sponsor can have one sign. And if you notice, there's a colored drawing of the signs in the packet. That's what VDOT says the signs have to look at, even down to a specific color of the sign in the post itself.
Okay. And secondly, who installs the landscape? Does the county do it, or do the...
We took bids on landscaping contractors, and the same contractor that did the Pet Center landscaping was awarded that bid, and he's given us prices on all four sites.
Third, as far as the maintenance, who maintains these sites? Us? The county?
We would probably have that same contractor maintain them over years, because they'll be paying that fee every year.
My only fear is, I know some signs around the county that need some TLC right now, and they're not maintained well, and I don't want to put this on 58 and give a bad impression. The county won't keep a good impression against it.
We should have enough funds every year where, you know, a time where we can pay that landscape contract and come back and refurbish them every year.
Anybody goes to Henry County, they got such a beautiful entry, and come back there and say, "I want to get it where it's maintained well."
And once we get them up, and we hope, we'll have some other sponsors come forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hicks. Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to unfinished business. Do we have any? Mr. Smitherman.
No, sir, not from the work session.
We're down to 12 new business. Item A, open space land use renewal contract with Laurel Inc. Mr. Hunt.
Yes, Laurel Inc. currently has an open space use agreement for a golf course expiring on December 31, 2018. The county's land use ordinance requires a renewal application be submitted to the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office every six years if the landowner wishes to remain in the land use program. If the agreement is granted, the Honorable Shirley Hammack has submitted the deferred tax revenue will be $3,231.44 annually. County staff recommends the board approve the open space land use renewal contract submitted by Laurel Inc. and authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documentation. I have spoken to Ms. Hammack on the phone about this, and she says all the paperwork is in order if the board so wishes to renew this open space use agreement.
Okay, board's pleasure.
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a question, which golf course is this?
We were just saying.
We were just asking.
Is it Cedars? Is this Cedars?
I think it is.
No, no, it's Tuscarawee. And I got a question.
Sure.
I hold stock in Laurel Inc., so I need to...
You just need to abstain.
Abstain.
I remember doing Cedars. I don't even remember that.
This is...
I must have slept.
Well, I just recognized it being Laurel Inc. Any other discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously with one abstention. We're down to 12B, Dell lease purchase agreement from Mr. Smitherman.
Thank you, sir. This is a matter we discussed very briefly at the work session. We have had, the age and life expectancy of our servers related to our email system and other uses has expired. We've been working on borrowed time for some time and have been experiencing a good bit of problems as recently as four hours ago. We are requesting that the board enter into a lease purchase agreement with Dell to, for a three-year purchase of about $153,000, I believe, for new server infrastructure for the county. One-third of that payment, or approximately thereof, at $50,000 is budgeted in the current fiscal year, and the other two payments will have to be budgeted in successive years. Mr. Bud is here, and if you have any specific questions about the infrastructure or hardware, I'd be happy to turn it over to him.
Okay. It's the board's pleasure. Let's get it on the floor, and then we'll discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Dell lease purchase agreement as presented in today's work session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mrs. Scares. So looking for discussion. Any questions, comments? Mr. Davis.
I forgot you in the Navy, too. He's a man. Do we need assistance?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just, with my IT background, I just kind of went over the list that he has compiled, and everything with the cost of servers and the dual equipment you have to purchase along with these kind of contracts, it looks like it's a good deal. So we probably need to proceed on if our equipment is as old, six years old?
Six, going on seven.
Seven, you're almost seven years old. It's about time.
And just for a point of information for the citizens, this is purchased under the state procurement and...
State contract.
State contract. Get a good deal that way. My only question is, when we talk about going down today and how it happened, what's going on, how's our backup systems looking? Because I have some reservations about, do we have solid backup? So if one server operation is eliminated, what do we do?
Our backup system right now, it takes a backup, and it sends it to two different data centers and... data centers in the cloud. And we also have a local backup. So we actually have three different backups.
So we are backing up to the cloud?
Yes, sir.
So we could pull it down if we had to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that was the only question I had.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, please cast your vote. Please, all votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to 12. C, project used to be Homeland is now BGF Industries. Mr. Matt Rowe, performance agreement.
As all of you are well aware of by now, we had a very productive day in the southern part of the county with our colleagues from the city of Danville. And we announced with Secretary Ball's help this morning that Porsche Industries and their U.S. Division, BGF Industries, which BGF, of course, as Mr. Blackstock is well aware, has operations, main operations in Alta Vista, also have operations in South Hill in Virginia. So legacy industry for our area. They announced that they're locating not only their research center but also their corporate headquarters in the cyber park in Danville. It's a project we worked on for about two years. And it was 65 jobs, $7 million of capital investment, average wage of $75,000 per year, so almost double the county average as they build their new 25,000 square foot facility. What you have before you, and this is pretty rare, but this is also kind of how we try to do our agreements in Pennsylvania County, is when a company commits to us, they commit to us. And we expect them to show a sign of commitment. Just as we are investing in them, they should be investing in us. And so they have already gone ahead and signed the performance agreements that you gentlemen have been confidentially looking over now for almost six months, so there's no surprises in there. And so they have signed, there is no further negotiation. It is exactly what was agreed upon by this body. And so I think it's important for not only you gentlemen but also for the public and media to know what is in this agreement. And it shows, I think, as far as the commitment and this, really the diligence frankly that this body takes as far as in trying to ensure that the deal has the least amount of risk. Every economic development deal has risk. For me to tell you that it does not is a complete and utter lie. So our job is trying to reduce the risk. So as I mentioned, you have before you both the local performance agreement and you also have the Commonwealth Opportunity Performance Agreement, which the company was not required to sign, and they just also went ahead and did that as a sign of good faith for us. And so as part of this, there is absolutely no risk. And I can say that 100% on this, I'm actually contradicting myself. And the reason being is because this company has decided to give us as far as an irrevocable letter of credit for all incentive monies provided to them. And so if they do not perform, we have a bank card that we can go straight to their account and pull it out, and they cannot, that account cannot go below as far as the amount of money that is in the incentive fund. So there's no risk of default at all in that regard. And so they're doing that in order to receive funds in advance of performance, and that money is going straight into their building just so they can then turn and get it up and running as fast as possible. In addition to that, being within the, I've never seen a company do this before, but I think it shows once again the quality of this particular company. They have actually committed in the performance agreement to maintain the corporate headquarters and research facility at that location for at least 10 years. There's not many companies that will literally come and say, you know what, I'm so confident about this decision that I'm going to be here 10 years from now, and if I'm not there in 10 years, I will pay you a million dollars. And so that is also being covered and set aside in the fund with the irrevocable letter of credit, which is more than, as you'll hear, is a lot more than what we're putting on the table for them. And so that extends beyond, almost seven years beyond the initial three-year performance period that they, most deals are looked at over, so it's very rare. Our local commitments in the local performance agreement are, we are providing them with 12 acres of gifted land in the cyber park, which is located right next to the recently funded Center for Manufacturing Advancement. We are providing them with a $245,000 industrial enhancement grant, which is based upon our incentive matrix. So we maintain positive cash flow throughout the period. It's based upon true direct investment received from taxes on the $7 million capital investment. And then also, since they're in a enterprise zone, it's a non-discretionary, so we have to provide this $113,750. And that's really due to the fact of their jobs paying that high of a wage. That's a way that we're able to ensure that they are making those wage payments. They have to prove to us that through VEC, Virginia Employment Commission data and wage data, that those payments are being made as far as at the $75,000 level in order for them to get that grant. And so at the end of the day, the entire local incentive fund for this project is But of course, with us having the Riffle Partnership, the county's contribution is half of this amount at $179,375. And this equates to roughly $2,759 per job that is paying double what our county average is. Most locales would jump at the opportunity to be able to do that, especially with the backstop that this company has provided us. The Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, we anticipated the governor's office putting forward $250,000. They surprised us given the creditworthiness of this company and the fact that the company ultimately decided to put its corporate research center in the headquarters here. And so they came to the table with $275,000. And once again, that too is being covered by the irrevocable letter of credit. So it's a very secure deal. They'll be in the institute beginning November 1st, they're signing the lease. And I think a lot of credit goes to you gentlemen, but you know, it goes to what really Mark's doing as well. I mean, when you get a corporate headquarters, and I'm going to get on my soapbox here a little bit, because I think it's really important for everybody to hear this, up to this point, we've been winning projects based upon we're in the cheapest location to do business, we have a good workforce program, and we have good sites. But when you have a community where I can tell you, and you know this, Mr. Warren, from being in dinners with this company, it was down to us, Greensboro, North Carolina, and Raleigh-Durham. And at the end of the day, they came and they saw the quality of life that Pennsylvania County has of our three blue ribbon schools, with our great parks that Mark's doing, said, Mark, thank you. I have a client that's coming into town tomorrow, and the first thing I'm going to do is tell them about our now state's recognized park system. And then of course, what the city of Danville's done with the river districts. We checked off, for the first time since I've been here with a company of this quality, the quality of life box. And not many locales can do that. So I applaud you and I applaud the efforts as far as of the administration and our peers in the city of Danville. But if you have any additional questions, please let me know. We will be coming before you as well at some point in time in the future with the Tobacco Region Opportunity Fund grant. And just like the others, that grant too is secured by the company's irrevocable letter of credit.
Thank you, man. All right, it's the board's pleasure.
What do you need in the form of a motion, Matt?
Need a form of a motion to approve the local performance agreement and the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund agreement.
I make a motion to that effect.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Dr. Miller. Any discussion on the motion? Matt's very modest. He's been working on this project for a little over two years. And I talked with those company leaders today. We had several of our folks in attendance, Dr. Miller, Mr. Davis, Mr. Blackstock. Those folks were so complimentary of this region and the efforts put forth and all the past work that's been done to get the workforce right and to feed a program right, the quality of life right. It made you be proud to be a citizen of Pennsylvania County when you heard those folks speak today. So thank you, Matt. You always like to fly under the radar, but we're not going to let you do it all the time. So thank you for good work. Mr. Smithersman, thank you for the good work also. I know you worked quite a bit with this company. So thank everyone. Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Blackstock, Dr. Miller. Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks again, Matt. $7 million investment, 65 new jobs averaging $75,000, corporate headquarters in our region. Congratulations, great job.
Mr. Chairman, I could make one comment on the textile end. Working with textiles years ago as myself, the technology that they've got that's coming, the materials they're going to be, I think, they're not going to say this, I don't think, but I think we'll have the ability to coat as well as to protect our military as right along with law enforcement. There's going to be fabrics, I believe, in the future that is going to be astounding and it's going to put Danville, Pennsylvania County as well, I think, on the map with their technology and their advancements. And I'm talking cutting-edge technology out there. So it's very exciting to me to see the technology we've got coming here in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, we're down to 12. D, landfill hurricane Michael related tipping fee waiver. Mr. Davis?
In the past, the board has approved a waiver of tipping fees during the time of storms and disaster. You did it recently for the tornado, Chairman Warren, you mentioned earlier. We'd like to ask that you do the same for Michael. And we're asking that it be extended for 90 days. And as we did during the last storm, we will ask people to provide some type of proof, whether it's a picture or something showing, you know, that it was storm damage, because people will try and unfortunately skirt the rule. So we want to make sure that it is storm damaged. But we are asking for a period of 90 days, starting October 11, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that it start on October 11, 2018, for 90 days, we'll waive the tipping fees at the landfill in regards to damage from the recent storms.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Vote carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Are there matters from the works, I'm sorry, appointments from, for DSS, from the Tunstall District? Mr. Barber?
Yes, sir. Actually, to Pennsylvania County Community Services Board, I'd like to nominate Ms. Emily Hill. A little bit of her background, she was a nurse in Pennsylvania County Schools before retiring, and she spent a lot of time, especially with students. I think she'd be a perfect fit.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor to add Emily Hill for the Tunstall District, Representative for the Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Service. Do I have a second? Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on a motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to appointments for DSS Tunstall District.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, back a few months ago, Ms. Mays called me and contacted me and resigned the board. She had like all the time, the boss at Chapman's John, he passed away, and she was with him since the beginning. She has some other issues going on, and she resigned in good terms. And she's requested to be reappointed to let her fulfill the rest of her term, and I don't see any reason why not to do it. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Gracie Mays to fulfill the remainder of her term.
Motion for to return Gracie Mays to DSS Board, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Mr. Blackstock. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries 6-5-1-1. Thank you. Matters from work session. Mr. Smithersman?
There are none, sir.
Thank you. We will start with board members' reports. We'll start with Dr. Miller tonight.
Just a brief comment in regards to things that are going on, considering the announcements for the industry locations and jobs, I am very, very pleased. And when I think in terms of the overall progress that's being made by Pennsylvania County, our schools, our recreation department, our economic development department, I'm proud of the part of Pennsylvania County.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mr. Davis?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Blackstock?
I won't go into longer on everything, but I'm very proud. BGF has been an anchor in my community. They actually located across the river in Alta Vista, but Alta Vista and Hurta joined at the hip and only divided by the river itself. And they employ a lot of people and half of generations. And to have them locate their company, the headquarters in Pennsylvania County is something that I'm very proud of. And at the ribbon cutting today, I thought about the generations of people in my community that I know personally that have been able to provide for their families through that company. And so really excited about that. And the second thing is, I'm only a service authority also and saw a lot of pictures. I'm from the northern end of the county. We did suffer some devastation over there, mostly trees and washed out roads. But over here on the opposite end of the county, it was obvious to me last night in the pictures that we saw at the service authority and talking with the county staff over the last week, the devastation that has gone on in the county. And I'm very proud of the volunteers, our county staff, VDOT, everybody working together. When something bad happens, it just looks like we all rally around each other. And I'm proud to be a part of, a citizen of Pennsylvania County and call this home. So really appreciate the efforts of everybody during this storm.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Farmer?
I'd just like to announce this coming Saturday, the town of Gretner will be hosting their annual Old Timers Jubilee. So if you have free time to come, join us in Gretner. And also to echo Mr. Blackstock's comments, for the ones who missed the work session this afternoon, Chris Limp, I cannot begin to try to recreate all the people that he mentioned that he wanted to thank and recognize, you know, from him personally, but obviously from all of us, whether you're elected official or just a citizen, we're all affected the exact same way by these storms. So just want to recognize all of our EMS workers, 911, Sheriff's Department, et cetera. So just really thankful that, for where we live at, and like, I think a lot of the comments, just proud to see the rallying of everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. Mark?
I kind of want to echo what they said. I was there, I'm going to tell you a story now. When that storm come up, when I left work, the roads were blocked everywhere you go on my road, couldn't get out of anywhere. There's people lined up. So I go up the road, there's a guy up there with a chainsaw cutting a tree. So I stopped, and I got informed that I had one of the trucks. I get out, and I start cutting wood, cutting the trees. It was like huge trees. Anyway, when I got through, we got it all cleared and hooked up, and there was cars on it everywhere. And it was 30, 40 people up there had gotten out, some of them nice, good night. And it really made me proud, and I knew why I served on this board and represent such a great bunch of people. I mean, it was like all groups ethnic, everybody's working together. I mean, we just come together, and I saw the good in the world for a few minutes anyway. But it just really made me proud to live in Pennsylvania County, because I didn't even realize what was going on, because I was cutting. And I saw all those people, I mean, it was amazing. I tried to get them to go to the farm and help me, but everybody got in the car and left. But it was amazing when I saw that. And I mean, that's what we... And I mean, that's what, we talked about one time, what our greatest strength in Pennsylvania County is the people. There's no doubt about it. That's what Matt Sells is the people here. I mean, they're great people. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else except where that's.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Mr. Scars?
Yeah, I'd like to echo all of that. I mean, the public out there, they really jumped in. My wife was coming home through that deluge and trees across the road, and there were people from the public out there cutting trees to the roads. It wasn't VDOT, wasn't anyone else, it was people in the county. So, not only do I wanna recommend, you know, what the Sheriff's Department, 911, fire and rescue, but also wanna really coin Chris Slent. I relied on him many times this week, and I know he was probably non-stop working the whole time. And I really think he's been one of our best hires, besides some of the others I could talk about in this room. But, for this week, he was a star, and we really need to appreciate him. Thank you.
Can I say one more? I wanna thank David, too. I didn't know if he was gonna do that. He was working this weekend. I ain't gonna get them to take it. But, I did wanna thank him, and I know he come down and surveyed the damage, and I appreciate what you did. You did a great job also. And he was with Chris, too. They even come to my house, I thanked brother-in-law, said, "Some guy come here from the Fire Marshal's office." I was like, "The Fire Marshal's office?" They got mixed up.
No, we were driving Fire Marshal's truck.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would echo those same sentiments, EMS, 911, the volunteers, we talked about in the work session. You know, it just seemed like those sirens were running constantly. Certainly, in those districts hit the most. And the citizens, as been mentioned earlier, they were out clearing their roads and all that. But, I too, Mr. Barber, find it to be a very proud moment for the way our citizens and everyone responded to the storms and the good news today from the economic development effort. I agree with you 100% on all of it. But, I noticed even sitting there this evening, when Mr. Slent was giving his report on those storms, he was talking about a real coordinated effort between 911, Deputy Motley helping out and being a part of that, and involvement there, the volunteers. He talked about them even feeding him as he continued to work the long hours. So, I just think it's amazing. I mean, I am on such a high today from everything we experienced with the economic development announcement, and then all the reports about the help that was given during the storm by everyone. It does make you very proud to be a citizen of Pennsylvania County. So, a lot to be proud of. And I'm honored to have the opportunity to serve this county as I'm sure every man up here is. So, thank you for that. Mr. Smithman, do you have anything, sir?
Yes, sir, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. With what we do, a lot of times, we are doing hard work that goes unnoticed, that's preparing for other work. I'm specifically thinking about our emergency responders, our sheriff's deputies, our 911 dispatchers, our volunteers. They put in all the long hours, so when we need their help, they're ready to respond, and they always respond well. This storm, we were not ready for. At 1:00 on the day of the event, pretty much everyone representing emergency responders were at Mary's Diner, having the monthly meeting of LEPC. And at 1:00, the common consensus was, nothing really is going to happen. Within 75 minutes, excuse my language, all hell broke loose. We weren't ready. We didn't have the EOC, we didn't have backup people for 911. We didn't have extra deputies on call. We weren't ready. But, everyone responded immediately. Our 911 center had some of the highest, of the call volumes, he was telling us today, were nine, 10 times what they would normally have, maybe more. It was an astonishing number. But, all the hard work people do every single day paid off at the moment we needed them. And it goes to show the professionalism of all the people in our emergency services. I wanna particularly call out our 911 dispatchers, who had a tremendous 24-hour period. Our Swiftwater Rescue Team, which I don't think existed 30 months ago, was out and about making lifesaving calls. Anecdotally, I'll say, I have spent some time with the Sheriff's Department lately, and, you know, they prepare, they prepare. I happened to be on a ride-along on a night they arrested a murderer. And the decision-making that I saw in real time, without consultation with Sheriff Taylor, without consultation with Major Motley or Major Nicholson, on the ground, in real time, making life and death decisions, just blew me away the amount of professionalism and training that our folks go through and are able to exercise in the real world. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to get to know our deputies better than last month. I will not go without having an opportunity to talk about trash for just a moment. We've been working really, really hard, and we finally, 100 days in, are starting to see the payoff for some of that effort. We have two sites closed now between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Our citizens in that area are tremendously respecting and appreciating what we're doing. Our flows are down, which means we're spending less time on the road, running trash back and forth through the landfill. The sites are cleaner than, anecdotally, I've had so many people tell me, cleaner than they've ever been. Our attendants are happy and are happy to help our citizens. Our citizens are happy that people are there to help. That's two sites out of 33. We have a ton of work to do, but we're gonna keep slowly moving along. We are gonna dramatically improve our recycling efforts in the next 30 days. And there will be a reasonable destination for your plastic and cardboard, no matter where you live in the county, in the next, certainly 60 days, but 30 days for cardboard. And we know we have a problem with tires. And Mr. Barber made the suggestion this evening that we're so happy to follow through with, is have a solid waste committee meeting come up. And one of the issues we're gonna talk about is us taking tires so that we don't have to worry about illegal tire dumping. And it's a service that we can provide for many, many people that need that service. So, instead of just banning tires from our system, we're gonna come up with a creative way of being able to set those at a nominal cost and get those recycled appropriately. Point of all that to say is, we do a lot of hard work every day. Most people don't see it, but in the times that matters, your professional, local government staff steps up, and they're doing a tremendous job. It's a pleasure to work with all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smithman. You have anything, Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll read this, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay.
Thank you, yes.
All right. We have three closed sessions this evening. First one, discussing certain prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Legal authority for Virginia Code 2.23711A5. Subject matter, Project AP. Purpose, discussion of unannounced prospective industry and potential incentives. Second closed session item is the same. Legal authority for Virginia Code Section 2.23711A5. Subject matter, Project Censor. Purpose, discussion of unannounced prospective industry. And our third and final closed session, discussion, consideration, and interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, employment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of a public body. Legal authority for Virginia Code 2.23711A1. Subject matter, County Administrator. Purpose, Performance Evaluation.
Let's see, good a motion?
I make a motion to that effect.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock. Seconded by Mr. Barber. Are there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. We are now, we will take a couple-minute break and then a closed session. All right, the board hereby certifies they went into closed session for only the items enumerated on the agenda and did not deviate from the matters on the agenda. If any board member believes that they have violated any portion of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, please state now, and your objection will be noted in the minutes. Now, Ms. McCuster's gonna do a roll call vote.
All right, Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scars?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Is there other business to come before the board?
Yes, it's, the plan's still the same, correct? All right. My computer, here's your, anybody's computer up that I can read?
Mine's still up.
Okay. Um, we'll need a motion to enter back into closed session. The legal, amend the agenda to enter back into closed session. The legal authority is still the same, 2.23711A1. Under personnel, the subject matter is the county administrator. The purpose will be discussion of a potential new employment agreement.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Scars, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion?
Is it okay, Vane, to have the amending the agenda and the closed session in the same motion?
Yeah, that's fine. But, Ken, are you, you're gonna type and have a place for them to vote, right?
Yep.
Are we gonna vote electronically?
Yes. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. All right, you ready?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scars?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We'll now re-enter closed session. Please clear the courtroom. The board supervisors hereby certifies they went into closed session for the reasons outlined in the motion going into closed session. If any member believes that there's been a deviation from the rules of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in the closed session, please state now, and it'll be entered into the minutes. At this time, Carolyn will do a roll call vote.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scars?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. There being no other further business to come before the board tonight, I declare the meeting adjourned.